Hi, love.
How do you put the light up on your iPhone? Like the light?
I don't know iPhones. I'm Android. Androids are reliable.
Right. Sunscreen.
And I'm live. No, that's okay. Just don't say anything inappropriate, tangy. We have a full house tonight.
I promise to be in order. First thing we'll have is our dedication.
If you would, God, please. Heavenly Father, we just thank you so much for this evening. We thank you, Lord God, for things that you've done for Helena. We thank you for each and every person that is represented here tonight. We just pray, Lord God, that we always honor you with every decision that we make. Lord God, that we steward, you know, the responsibilities that you've entrusted us with well. Lord, we just thank you so very much for everything that you have given us. Everything that we have is because of you, and we just want to acknowledge that. And we pray for your wisdom and guidance tonight as we work on our behalf. And Lord, we just ask all of these things in your presence, whole again.
Amen.
Okay, Tanner James from T. County Council has sent a hominist in our pledge.
Attention, so we pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Next, we have councilor Rob Hall.
Here. Joseph here. Whitman.
Here.
Bell.
Here.
Bang Lee.
Here.
We have four of them. Next, we have the presentation of our minutes from the August 23rd, 2021 meeting. Y'all all have a chance to read those minutes. So have a motion. Is there any minutes?
Motion, we approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve, and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, we have our revenue report and our bill payment. Again, if y'all have a case, we'll get the revenue and the bills. Any questions or discussion? I'll entertain a motion to pay the bills.
Make a motion, will you pay the bills?
I'll second.
That motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pay the bills. Next, we have our municipal operations report from Mayor Puckett.
Thank you, Council President Uncle Bill. So just wanted a couple of things to touch on from the various departments of the city. So first want to mention and congratulate Chief Landau presenting at the, two weeks ago presenting at the Project Lifesaver Conference down in Orlando. So it's great to always have representation at these different types of conferences. And our people out there spreading the good word about all the things that Helena is leading by example with. Also, with that, the city's partnership with Culture City for sensory inclusion, that was actually the final onboarding process ended today. So now when you go to the app, you go to any of the parks, the library, city hall here, there's always available sensory inclusion bags. Then next, for the fire department, real quick, the COVID calls are continuing to get worse and worse. So there's a lot of several, there's several calls that our fire department is running as far as pneumatic related with all the COVID. But that leads me into the transition of our new transport units, rescue units. Should be here hopefully within mid or end of September, beginning of October. So just a few weeks away. And then the new pumper truck that we ordered back in November last year is now on schedule to be delivered to its first apartment in November. So y'all see new fire trucks, new rescue units driving around town. They will be a different color. I'll let y'all decide on what color they'll be, but it might be blue. So think about it be different. And then finally, one thing that's, we are a community, we always talk about being created here in Helena. Please make sure that if you ever need help, reach out to someone. Whether it's a feminine or friends, even the resources here from the property. The number for suicide prevention hotline is 800-273-8255. We never want any of our residents to go through those types of things alone. And if we need help, please reach out. So we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to save your lives.
Thanks, Byron. All right, next on our agenda is the approval of our 2022 general fund budget. We spent a lot of time discussing that. Does anybody have any comments they'd like to make? Resolution, a vote? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution 0913-2021, our 2022 general fund budget.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 0913-2021, fiscal year ending 2022, our general fund budget.
We've had a motion.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Next, we have a resolution indicating holidays to be observed by the city employees for the fiscal year 2022. And I do not have a list of those. Do you have a list of those? I, I.
It should be included.
They're in the packet, yeah, but.
I don't know, we haven't had any changes, Byron.
No, it's the same, same holiday.
I just didn't have a list in front of me, so. Okay, I'm entertain a motion that we approve resolution 0913-2021A indicating holidays to be observed by the city employees.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 0913-2021A indicating holidays observed by city employees for fiscal year 2022.
I'll second.
We've had a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? It's a days old. Next, we have a motion to approve, showing how important this is right. Approve getting the ABC license, special retail license, and special events for the Buck Creek Festival we held at 20, 24th and 25th. Laura, do you have anything you want to say about that?
This is very similar to what we would do for the residential thing of that. We just have to for a letter of agreement where it has to have a special license for the Buck Creek Festival. Have you all got it?
Right, she's right. All right, I'll entertain, excuse me, a motion to approve the Buck Creek Festival ABC license, special retail license for them. I'll entertain a motion that we better have her letter, give her license.
I'll make a motion that we approve the letter for Buck Creek Festival ABC license.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Amanda, I'd like to have Stacey's phone.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
All right, next, we have another resolution, and it is presenting to us from Richmond Properties, dedication of a right of way. And Brian, I'll let you explain that a little bit if you would.
Yes, so this is a lot of legal formalities. So as part of the developments, it's the special district area where the Dollar Tree and all of that's there. That's the road, that's the access road that goes throughout that development. As we get further down, and it's getting further north on that road, we're behind Dunkin's and Freddy's and all that. That access road is actually on multiple people's properties. So we're having to get them to dedicate their right ways to us so that we can be able to work towards getting that access road finished off.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I have one question.
Okay.
Is there any, is there a name to this road now, or is that going to be a?
It's already, it's whatever road is back there already. Let's just.
I don't know the name. It's okay.
Stevie.
Stever. Stever. I heard Stever.
Stever.
Can you spell that? Thank you.
S.T.E.V.
Okay, that's visual.
Yeah.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to, sorry, to approve a resolution 0913-2021B, dedication of this right of way.
I'll make a motion, will you approve resolution 0913-2021B?
All right, we've had a motion and a second.
I'll second.
We've had a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? All right. All right, next, we have need to have an emergency repair to the building maintenance for our library. So we have budget amendment. We got a hundred dollar amount here, about eighteen thousand. Eighteen thousand dollars. And I'm, what has to do with drainage, right? Is that right?
Flooding.
Flooding. Right.
Look to get that. Foundation goes beneath.
And we know it's eighteen thousand?
Yes, so there's two companies that are licensed to do this type of work. And to take it all down, we have to approach and move above them. And so the low bidder is that itching down. So that's what we're going with, moving to the better.
I'll entertain a motion that we amend the budget to include repairs for the library building maintenance.
I'll make a motion that we approve a budget amendment in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars for emergency repairs for building maintenance that the Jane Holmes helped the library.
I'll second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
opposed? Repair on our. Okay, next thing on our agenda is a resumee request for 2698 Helena Road, residential to special district. I know we have a lot of people in the audience that are interested in this. It did come to us with a unanimous vote on planning his own favorable vote, planning his own good conditions. And I know that some of you may want to speak, and I know a lot of you spoke to us before. So I'm going to ask Laura to name those conditions that go along with this resumee, and then I'll give some of you a good chance to talk, somebody isn't interested.
Okay, when this issue came before the planning and zoning commission, it was approved with conditioning, with conditions including a twenty-foot planted buffer to be determined at the time of the platte, and said buffer to be recorded and maintained by the property owner of 2698 Helena Road, with a further condition being any drive-through constructed on the property is to be on the opposite side of the buffer at 2744 Helena Road.
All right, like I said, I know a lot of you have spoken to us before, and I'll welcome your comments, but if you have spoken to us before, I would appreciate it if you had the, anyone that had something to say that has not been said in some of our previous meetings, if there's someone that would like to speak to us. If you would come forward and make your name and address, please. And you have two minutes.
I'm Penny Smith and 3,000 miles with plane. Moved here 29 years ago, so I'm not kind to the Heinz family, one of the few in this room. But they are family. And you talked about community. Since I moved here 29 years ago, the city's done a really nice job with growth and balancing, trying to balance the old Helena with the new. And I just ask that you really consider that as I was driving down the road today from Ms. Francis's house toward Chick-fil-A, you get to her house and there's no trees. But before that, there's, there's trees. And unfortunately, when the tornado went through, it took the side's house, which was a landmark in Helena, and we can't control that. You can control this. And once you, I just ask that you be very diligent in your decision. And it's Ms. Francis's house, and then it's Mr. Billy Harris's house. And then you get to the post office that, I hate to say it, but I love it. I love that little post office that you can't get in and out of. And then it goes down the road, and when you get rid of the elementary school, you get rid of the post office, you may as well be able to bypass the Cola Palace because Helena's gone at that point. So I just ask that you really consider what you're doing, because I love those little ghosts in October. And I drive through this and look at Francis's house in October to see where her ghosts are that morning. And she's cooked many meals. So it's not just about her, it's about the Helena Road that we all know and love, and that's all.
Because this is not taking your part, you do understand that?
I do understand that, but I see that, that from her house forward, you know, and I like Chick-fil-A and I like Waffle House, but I could live without it.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak, cause Laura has something you didn't have?
Go ahead and show exhibit one.
All right, first, you stand up and say your name and address, please. We'll look close right here.
My house at Heinz and my house and my property are the ones that are in jeopardy. I know you keep saying it's not going to affect my property, but it is. In every way, whether you realize it or not, it's going to affect my property. And I would like to show, when I pick it up out of my yard, I know Chick-fil-A can't help it, but this is what I get in my yard. And it's not just every now and then, it's every two or three days. And every building that's added that has carryouts, it's going to continue. It's not going to just go away. And I'd like to let you know that we live in a neighborhood. Most of y'all consider you live in a subdivision. Ours is a neighborhood. All these people here have known me for years, and I've known all them. We were born, I wasn't born here, but most of these people were born and raised here. Their families were born and raised here. We have served in every capacity, and we'll die and be buried here. And I just want you to know that whatever you decide, I will have to die, die. But I will have to be satisfied. And I'll let you know right now that if it, if it comes right down to invading as close to my property as it's supposed to be, then it's not going to be good. I've asked all of y'all, would you want this next to your house? You said no. I asked the zoning board, they said no. I asked Dan, he said no. So why is it okay to put it next to my house? That I have been there for sixty-two years. My house may not be quite as new as yours, it may not be quite as pretty. It's well-kept, and it's painful. It's mine. And I don't plan on anybody taking it away. And I don't want you to take away my security, my privacy. And that's what's happening. You're tearing up our neighborhood.
Ma'am. My recollection was we talked about a fence in addition to the planted buffer. Bob Kelly at the planning commission.
It was not recorded until the minute in the, in the verge of motion.
Mr. Dan, you agreed to it a little while ago.
Yes.
You agreed to the fence.
The fence was.
In addition to the.
Yep.
Mr. City Attorney, I think that's legal.
Yes, he's agreed to it.
All right.
Right.
Okay. I just wanted to get that in.
So fifteen-foot fence?
Twenty.
Or eight fence?
Twenty-foot planted buffer. Plus a fence.
I agree with you, with your vote on those conditions.
Twenty-foot buffer and the fence.
In addition to the drive-through on the opposite side.
Fifteen-foot fence.
We can determine the height at the time of the platte. We can determine the height of the fence at the time of the platte. I didn't hear you.
I said I don't agree with any of those conditions, but I agree with your vote on those circumstances.
All right, so to clarify, the conditions include a twenty-foot planted buffer and fence to be determined at time platte, and said buffer to be recorded and maintained by the property owner. And further condition being that any, any drive-through which is constructed on a property must be on the opposite side of the buffer. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Which is, which is the drive-through side, the pickup side or the border side?
It's good, if we agreed it would be on the opposite side on this Heinz property. It wouldn't be on the side.
There'd be no drive-through.
Border property. We talked about this ad nauseam, Dan.
I'm sorry?
We talked about this at length.
All right, correct.
Is everybody clear about the conditions, sir? Are there any questions that you have, or is it clear?
I guess I do want to ask a new time that.
Sorry, hope you don't get carsick.
Doesn't have to trigger a, um, if we add the.
If we add clearance.
I mean, if we do a confidence, then, okay. With the owner's consent.
With the owner's consent. Then we have a start with consent.
To include that, we have your verbal consent to include the fence along with the conditions.
Yes.
Can we get high from the six in the morning? A six-foot fence and a fifteen-foot fence are different. Big difference.
Is this a, that's where you determine it platte? That and the, that and the buffer would be determined at platte.
The platte will have to go back to planning and zoning for them to approve it. The platte, they would have to approve the size of the fence and everything. And before it could continue.
Details and all that stuff will be, that's the class.
So it'd have to go back to them. All right. You'll go forward and state your name and give it on a note.
So I'm gone, I'm in the party at 5584 Lloyd Drive. A question that I have as far as, I'm not familiar with the noise ordinances, but with regards to a dumpster emptying in the middle of the night or certain hours, are there going to be some restrictions or are there in place restrictions regarding noise in residential areas since residences adjacent?
Our noise ordinance is in effect from seven AM till ten PM.
Yeah. But there is a noise ordinance also relating to decibels.
Okay, I'm sorry. Where are the noise ordinance, this also includes a decibel level? I'll pull that up right now.
Okay, I'll be curious, the hours here. I believe it's ultra low. I think it's continued from seven AM.
The noise starts midnight to seven AM.
So would that prohibit that? I know there was some discussion earlier about people who live in here, places where dumpsters were emptied, all hours. So would that prohibit those types of activities taking place on the site?
Okay, I think he's got the, did you find it?
It's thirteen.
Yes. Where'd you find it?
Seven, seven, five, zero, eight says that it's going to be from midnight to seven AM. And then the sound produced should be maintained within a short period.
Eight, twenty-nine dash thirteen X.
Eight, please. Yeah, eight, twenty-nine, thirteen X.
I'm getting down to the, the four number.
It's under section four A. Okay, is unlawful for any person to use, operate, or permit to be used or operate any device, a list of devices, follow that, that creates sound that exceeds eighty decibels during the hours of six AM till nine PM, or which exceeds seventy decibels from nine PM to ten PM Sunday through Thursday, nine PM to twelve AM Friday through Saturday at any property line within a residential district.
When's that dated, how?
This is, this would be thirteen, be 2013.
That might be a person not. I've not set her gene two thousand.
I'm still a little.
The B allows authorized activities under the city. So I'm not sure if that would be.
So is that applicable on residential and the business as well?
It says residential districts.
Okay, I found an amended noise ordinance dated October 21st, 2013.
This one's August 2014.
This is residential?
This relates to residential, the exception being authorized city activities. So I guess that would be a decision the police chief wants to join in, not whether dumpsters would be considered a violation or not. Does not state precisely whether the garbage company would be considered an authorized city event.
It's not explicitly listed in the ordinance, and we can't.
I was here when we were, it was really regarding users and fans.
Has that been considered in the restrictions by planning and zoning?
My planning and zoning pretty much looks at the zoning and whether or not the intended use fits with what the property is currently zoned for, and whether or not rezoning a property would be advantageous for the city. So not to be, I could call here, but zero, seven, seven, five, two, zero, zero, eight, noise. When we look at that, obviously that's in no way previously previous, but it has more content in it where the others are the amendments too. So I think this might be the original, possibly. And in this particular part, it says section, well, first I'll go to the definition. So for section two definitions, three is commercial premises. It says shall, for the purpose of this ordinance, mean any premises, or offices, businesses, clinics, channels, shopping, restaurants, and service establishments exist. And then sounds on commercial premises, section three says no person, firm, or corporation shall within the hours of twelve PM midnight until seven AM the following morning operate or cause to be operated any, on any commercial premises. Any source of sound other than noise in a manner has to create sound level that is subject to detection that had a normal unaided human ear. Then we have the electronic part in section four. Section five, excessive noise restricted. And part of my question, would you give that places leading over into residential? Is that?
We have, I was just informed that twice in the past several years, we have cited dumpsters or dumpster companies that have done it. The only problem is, is the officer has to be present when it's happening. And obviously, he's the only one who has to hear it. So it'd be there when, when it actually happens, but if that is the case, yes, we can. Thank you, Brad.
That's from midnight till seven AM.
So you stay in the day, some junkers, not the weekends, but seven days. Then you cite different times.
Well, that was just the reason for that.
Is that just for the.
Yeah. If you were to, I'd have to read through the whole thing instead of reading on my phone and acting like you're a more defensive answer. I hate to tell you something wrong just by trying to read it on my phone right now.
Now, I was just, just want to make sure I was clear in the understanding.
Noise in residential area does apply throughout the week, but there's certain times based on whether it's a weekday or whether it's during the week. Noise in residential area does, um, apply throughout the week, but there are certain times based on whether it's a weekday or whether it's during the week.
So any noise generated at that side, is it bled over into the residential?
It's probably resistant.
Be the same.
If it violates it, then yes, but you said the officer would need to be present. You're right. But I'm hearing the.
That's my understanding.
But if, if it's heard once and then it was recorded, possibly like, like either the next day to see if it happened again. Like in this simple, I'm, I'm, I'm answering it, I don't know for sure. That is something to consider, back to you.
I just have a question, should we, next, if I live behind the public's area and it does happen often, should we start logging it? I hate to call the police each time I hear the noise, but how else are they gonna know what they need to say after?
Well, I'd have to refer to the opposite one, but I would say if you log it and then it could eventually happen in close to the same time, then let them know and then they can come out there and hear it.
There's an action center tab on the city's website, and so you can put, there is a, a drop, in the dropdown section, there is that noise issue. So you can report it to them that way.
Sounds like it's probably something that we should address.
Correct.
With all these companies.
So the dumpster comes.
Let them know in advance, say.
Exactly. Anyone else? Alright, George Pickle.
Sorry, can you go there and announce my name now?
You have to do the pictures up.
Since you'll now become the run.
I'm sorry.
Uh, my name's George Pickle, most of you know, I spent quite a bit of my life here in Helena. Um, you know, lived with, uh, with Hynde's family, their family has been a great resource to the city of Helena for many years, providing, uh, family members to continue to work here and resources, uh, and volunteer in time to, uh, box a lot of different things. So I have a couple of things, one firstly managed before I forget, the noise ordinance, and, and Brad was here and I was here, and, uh, we had these same problems with the dumpsters. Uh, typically, a lot of it was handled, if we can find out who, if we can find out who the company was and inform them that there was a certain time that they could come, a lot of times they volunteered to change their routes. If they did change the routes, that's what Brad talks about, we had, we did have to write a ticket or two. Uh, and when you do, it spreads like wildfire, it stops it for a little while. But the biggest thing is just trying to find out what company it is and, and, and enforce them and let them know that we're going to cite your driver if you don't change your times to a reasonable time for, for noise. Uh, I had a couple of questions in reference to, because of this, this, uh, rezon. Um, there was, there's been a lot of discussion about the rezon, the planning buffer and things like that, and of course, it's been referenced to the old plan, which that particular property was removed at council, so it wasn't part of the plan. And he's come back wanting to rezon and bring it back in as part of the plan, and, and that's all fine and good, I'm not, I'm not against that particular part of it. But at that time, it was required to have a thirty-foot buffer. Uh, you've addressed the buffers, I'm, I'm dropping the buffer, like, uh, put the fence on there, with some planted trees and meet the requirements of the buffer requirements. But I also understand, and people keep referencing the buffer as this or that, under special district, the zoning and council has the right and authority to modify those requirements to satisfy, to protect the properties adjoining, whether it's Ms. Hynde, whether it's me, or whether it's anybody else. So y'all have the right to make those changes, specifically clarifies that in the zoning. Another thing was, and it's not been addressed, and my concern is, is so that we don't get into a situation that we got stuck with during, um, my term here with, with the city was rezoning a piece of property and not having proper access and then having to come up with a solution. You know, even with a solution, it does reduce the fact of safety concerns about ingress, egress to, to and from, uh, already congested road. And what are the improvements that may be done to two sixty-one at some point in time to address the congestion? And we'll turn around and adding another commercial site, and that provides services for the people of the community. It also provides, uh, a tax base for the community. But we also need to make sure that the people that are using that service are also safe for entering and exiting that particular business, whatever business, whether it's retail, fast food, coffee shop, I don't know what's going to go there. Only Dan has an idea what he may have listed yet. But there's been no, no questions or concerns that I've been, that I've heard in reference to safety concerns of ingress, egress for that piece of property. Because you're rezoning that piece of property and it's an individual piece, is it gonna have safe and approved access to the state highway? Is there an alternate route that's gonna be used and has alternate route been recorded? Uh, is it bonded? To make sure if it's not, if the improvements are not there, to make sure that we don't run into situations where we have in the past, where Helena's always been a family-oriented, uh, city. And you, and we like to take people's words, they do what they say they're gonna do, then there's obstacles that happen. I got stuck with excessive pavement deals because bonds weren't big enough, and so when I went back and incurred some losses, two hundred percent, they don't cover those costs because we got, we don't want to continue finding out problems after the fact, and we're spending taxpayers' money to correct these properties. And so an ingress, egress, I feel at the rezon process should have been part of the discussion as much if not more because of it being safety concerns than above, although it, those, our, our requirements tell us as a city, I say that clearly, obviously, easily, but it tells us that we're to protect the local people, I mean, when I say they, I'm talking about property, property values. Now, there's no way that you put a drive-through or anything has a speaker that, that, that Ms. Hynde's not gonna hear. The noise ordinance will help dictate timeframes that, that happen. But what we need to do is we need to make sure that whatever service these plans are providing, I know that the building plan and the site plan and all that under special district, you've got to go back to the plan that's on the commission for, review again, and then it comes back to the city council or U C. But those are my concerns, because I'm concerned more about what I'm concerned about at the time, and, and her property, and her property values, and the fact that her family has provided services for this community for many, many years. For about forty-five years that I know of. Her husband used to be one of the, one of the few police officers that actually drove through town, and when somebody was moving in, he'd actually stop and get out and walk them up to the city. And there's many people in the city of Helena that remember that. You know, and, and they felt that closeness of this community. And so that's something that we want to continue to promote to our, to our people, to the citizens of our communities and protect the property values. But we also have to protect the people that are going to use these services. And so my question is, have, have these things been identified to verify that we're not stuck with a small piece of property and there's gonna be an ingress, egress issue that the state doesn't want to approve because it doesn't have proper site distance? Or is it gonna be relocated to another spot, if it's gonna be in another location? Has there been a recorded access with a bond that's gonna guarantee that that road gets put in, and if it's done, the city has the money to do it? Because it's recorded, so you can go on there and take care of it.
Yes. I know exactly who's saying.
Okay, so who's behind this?
Tracy Hynde, one twenty, alters the road. I just want to point out something that, um, not everybody may realize, but you know, all I keep hearing is, well, if it's gonna be a drive-through, well, I think it's pretty much apparent that this is gonna be a drive-through. Um, that's all I've heard. So to me, that what I'm hearing is there will be a drive-through next to her. And I keep hearing you reference, well, let's put the dri, you know, the, the speaker on the other side. Well, where do you think those cars are gonna go? They've got to circle the whole building. And when they come around, the whole back of her house is A-frame windows, and her house sits up closer to the road. Whatever goes there will have to sit, you know, a little bit further back. So when that car, you know, goes around, then those lights are gonna be shining right in her house, right in the back and to the side. So she's gonna have basically no privacy to the back or to the side. And a fifteen-foot fence is not going to protect her from, you know, tall parking lot lighting. You know, that's gonna be shining over. There's no large trees there, you know, to, to keep those lights from, you know, from shining. So I just want to make sure that, you know, that that's pointed out, because, you know, like I say, it, it's apparent to me that there will be a drive-through right next to her residential home. And to her point, not a single person in this room, well, let's just, raise your hand. Raise your hand if you would like to see a.
Aren't you addressing us, not them?
Raise your hand if you would like to see a drive-through next to your home. Anyone?
But you were addressing us, not them.
Well, sorry.
Okay, Bob, Bob, I would like to ask you, so, is there anything that's, can you say that no drive-through on that side? Is there, does that mean there can be no drive?
There'd be no drive-through on that side at all.
So no, there will be no driving through there at all, correct?
On that side of Ms. Hynde's property, there will be no drive-through, I, I don't know how I could make that any clearer.
Okay, there'd be no, no one would be driving on that side.
So it can't be a drive-through business?
Be part?
It can't be a drive-through type business, right? It would have to be a drive-us business, so how do, how do you explain?
But, well, that would have to be worked out by, uh.
We didn't, we did not engage his ability to have a drive-through on the other side, where he wants to do it on the other side away from Ms. Hynde's property.
But no car could drive through there behind, by the property?
No.
No. There'll be no, no driving on that side of the property at all? That's what I wanted to make clear, so nothing would be going, driving on that side? Thank you. You see, there would be no driving on that side of the property at all?
And we can address lighting and other issues that, that are detrimental to Ms. Hynde at the plat stage.
Alright, thank you. Alright, there's no more discussion, then we're coming out.
Can I say something?
Yes, you may.
If our department has to have access around the building, what they do with that access, we can't control. There will be access around the building.
Okay, alright, I think we're ready to call for a vote, unless you've got something really completely different to add.
Are you gonna vote now?
Yes, you're on. Alright, council? We have a rezoning request?
What, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm, so I was listening to you ask her.
We're gonna call it to a vote now, unless you have something very pertinent to add that's not already been said.
Well, one thing that I did think was important to add.
You'll answer it.
I'm sorry, I'm Jennifer Farrell, I'm Francis's daughter, I have C K twenty-three. One thing that I wanted to point out that seemed a little bit confusing at the very beginning of the meeting is that this map that's shown right here is from June of two thousand seven. June of two thousand seven was when it went to P and Z. And then in October, when it actually went to the council and was approved, that, that map changed.
We know that.
And there's another map, okay, so the property was on, so my thing is, is he asking for, so like he's coming back and he's bringing in this property that he wants to have rezoned, and it was not part of the master plan. So is he asking to modify the master plan because, and add it to it? Because if not, then he's asking for a single parcel to be approved as a special district, and it requires five acres to be a special district.
But my understanding is if it is touching a special district area, it could be added to it, is that correct?
With my understanding, he was asking that this be added as a modification of the master plan, and not this parcel into the special district, and that they approved it with these conditions, with the planning commission, approved it with these conditions attached to it.
I don't know that the planning commission didn't understand that it wasn't already part of the master plan.
Well, I can't speak for them, whether they did or not, because we've done a tremendous amount of research trying to find out.
Oh, I understand, I, I do, and that's my thing, I just feel like there's still so many questions, and if there's still so many questions, then why doesn't it go back to P and Z for review and more recommendations based on the information that we have now, with the new map and everything like that?
During a pre-council session tonight, our attorney sort of stepped us through all of those various meetings and motions and maps and what actually took precedence overboard, so I, I think the reason council has a very good understanding.
But we still don't know about the easements and have we got access that we need, is it going to be a single property where it's gonna come out onto the road right here where there's that hill?
That would have been P and Z with the plots.
That's, that's the plots.
But I thought George was saying it has to be done kind of now, so that we don't get stuck with a lot of expenses in case it doesn't work. Was that what you said, was it George, to pay check to the master plan?
To add, you know, an additional part to that, and we. I don't, I don't think that's a, because it's a modification, it's, it's an addition to the master plan instead of being a standalone price. Well, I just, I want to ask you, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
I just know repeatedly in reading the October minutes, one thing that was put into play over and over and over again was the importance of having a V one applied to any residential property. It, I mean, it was over and over again from all the different board members on the P and Z at the time. And I understand it's special district, but they still said over and over that if you had this choice and you were picking a particular type of use, that the use would be the least, um, it sounded like the use, it would be the, the use, the use would be the least limited amount of use, like a V one versus a V three, that they would select always the one that used the most, the least amount.
That's terminal order because it's saying it's residential.
So now they're rezoning it, though, would it still sort of fall under, and he's adding it to the modification of the master plan, would it still fall under the rules of the master plan?
Essentially, when this rezon, when he went before P and Z for this request, they are aware of what the requirements are to approve. Special district, V one, V two, special district allows for that in there. They made adjustments to their recommendation to us to kind of accommodate those things. So you're not wrong in that it could have been an option, but there are clearly, what is before us tonight, which is the only thing we can take action on, is what, what is, uh, what the actual motion is. It takes into consideration that it's special district and it has that buffer fence and the, um, the drive-through on the opposite side of the property. They would have known that when they were talking about that.
I don't know that they did, I don't even know, I don't know that they did, because I don't think they realized that that was, the map that was presented to them was not the map from October oh-one showing that it was removed. The map that went before them was this map that showed that it was still in there and part of the master plan, so they made.
This is killing me, I have to go.
Which it wasn't.
I am going to share somebody else's.
We just, we uncovered all that because they even came back.
Stay on this page.
Your mind's already been rezoned, and.
Thank you, it wouldn't, won't take so long, and I'm sorry, uh, we were out of town when you all started this, or, or I wouldn't be coming in so late. Um, zoning ordinance two point thirteen, it says, um, no recreational vehicles, buses, or trailers shall be visible on the street or property in conjunction with short-term rental use. I understand wanting to avoid.
Correct.
Safety problems and, uh, unsightly stuff. Um, however, um, a lot of our guests have been people who are moving to neighborhoods in Helena. They've been waiting for their house to be completed, it's behind schedule, they have nowhere to stay. Am I to tell them that they can't come just because they have a U-Haul? You know, or what if someone's traveling and they've got an R D? Or they can't, I can't accept travelers who have an R D? I don't, I don't know that I have any legal mechanism to even deny them housing if they have a R D? Um, that's kind of odd, especially when you think, I also operate long-term rentals, I've had some in Kiwi Town and some in Alabaster. The problem tenants who park stuff on the street and leave it there are long-term tenants. The, the short-term tenants don't even have a presence. Um, I, I just wondered if, if that wording was necessary, but that's all I had to say.
So you're sticking your opinion that you don't think it's necessary?
Well, yes, unless you want to answer me.
I think that ask is, and it's Thomas, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And I called you about your last time, but I didn't.
That's fine, it's a strange name.
Um, is, it, just discussion possibly about whether or not this needs to remain in here? Um, the no recreational vehicles, buses, or trailers? Um, and I, I mean, I can use it as.
What is this designed for then, I guess, is what I want to know.
I think it's a visual of it being, if, if it's in a neighborhood, so it's not.
But you've already outlined that by the zoning, so it's become. But you've already outlined that by the zoning, so it becomes an obvious issue, right?
So I, I will say to your point, like, and I don't know what each neighborhood's HOA allows for. But I will say to this point, like, I live in Fieldstone and we can have a, like, we could have our camper out of our house for, I can't remember how long it is, but it allows for it for, up to a certain period of time. Um, I mean, I think it's a valid ask. I don't-
I wonder if the HOAs could govern that themselves, but like where I live, there's no HOA, so.
One of the things that I think might be difficult with that is that if someone, if they, if they richer were found to be in non-compliance, the HOA would have no way to contact them other than through whoever owns the property. And that could, I mean, those people could be way more involved by the time that happens.
I think he's asking like, uh, like you said, road rides or the bill HOA, if they brought a moving truck, would that be a violation or could that be allowed? He's putting that to me.
Are you done about existing short-term rentals right now?
Um, I'm just wondering, um, am I supposed to ask my guests in advance, what kind of vehicle do you drive?
Yes.
And then if they say, well, I'm traveling to see my grandkids and come across country, we're gonna be going down to Florida, I've got my R D on, say, I'm sorry, you can't stay in Alena?
Are, are you able to post something prior to them looking at the property to state that-
Well, I can tell them how much parking space they have. So, uh, I can say, I've got, you know, I've got a carport and two spaces in the driveway or whatever. Um, but, uh, I, I don't necessarily know what they're driving. Um, but like I said, it's the long-term tenants and residents who live in houses who move stuff all over the place and have giant land.
They don't, they own that house and aren't about that else.
So I have a question for you. Um, I don't actually disagree with you. Um, I, I, and I have the upper hand if you're driving a camper across country. The likelihood of you parking it, I think, would be less likely, right? You probably, possibly, I, that could not be the case as well, and I understand that. Buses, that's a weird one. Like, I just think that would be a weird one.
Where would we put that many people?
And it relates to, I, I mean, I, we've been told numerous times at this point that several of these are being used for people who are in between homes in Alena. And particularly with schools starting up, going to have access to stay in Alena while they're going to transition into those places. And I don't personally have a problem with a U-Haul or like a pod being somewhere for, you know, a short period of time based on the fact that they're just moving. I can, I can do that in my own neighborhood. Uh, I do think to this point, HOAs already kind of govern that for most neighborhoods. And so you have this exception here that I don't know that that bothers me.
Now, I have a question. How do you think, seriously, how do you think this would come up?
Well, actually, not that often. Um, we've only had it one time. Uh, we had some guests who were working, they were with a company out of Georgia. Their job was with logistics and shipping with Home Depot and they actually had brought, it wasn't like a massive truck. It was like a, a U-Haul sized, like twenty-foot box truck, which was hard, but we had, we had tons of space in the street. They could have parked in the driveway too. There was enough space to do that. But, um, I didn't necessarily know they were going to bring that. Um, I can ask my guests, I can give them certain, um, guidelines about what they, where they can park and that sort of thing. But this is so restrictive that, um, the people who have been waiting on houses, none of them has had a U-Haul or a trailer. But if they were, and, and actually, one of my short-term rentals, there's a guy who has a, a, a trailer parked in his front lawn and two trucks. And he only has a one car parking spot. It's all in his lawn and his driveway and he's a, he's a resident and I talk about unsightly. I just, I feel like it's restrictive of the business that would actually benefit the city, um, while not, this is a double standard. You don't apply the same thing to long-term tenants. And it doesn't seem to accomplish, um, it doesn't seem to accomplish much for the city.
I would be willing to entertain removing, uh, section two point thirteen.
The third sentence?
Yes, and leaving everything else.
You're alright, babe. Do you, are, are you in favor of removing it or?
So is it talking about on the street or off-street?
There is no on-street parking allowed in, in the ordinance. So that's, that's already addressed. It would have to be in, it's, it's also says in this portion, one point five designated off-street parking space, per two bedrooms shall be provided. So you have to leave that in the, anyway. So if, if that's right, if you don't, you don't, is essentially what it would say if we struck sentence three.
Right. I have a question too. If I, if this is, this sounds like it would be, would be a very rare occurrence. Could, if he asked in advance, who's gonna have to have this, could a variance be permitted to him or?
I, I mean, that's a lot to go through, a variance for something that might have her wanting to have to get on the, the agenda for the school, but that would be-
Well, it, it could be an issue enforcement, uh, if the city understands that if someone has a moving van, called it by the move-in to the city, that that would not fall under, we would not consider that to fall underneath that. I mean, it could just be an enforcement, I would force it.
And I think too, to keep in mind, right, the, the beautiful things about this is whenever you do it in here, if we strike that and it's a nightmare, we just put it back in. And we don't even have to wait a year. We can revisit it next month if we want to. But it, it'll, it allows a freedom to the property owner to execute that. And if they can do that diligently, then great, it's working. And if it's not, we should shut that part down because if it's becoming a problem for the residents around.
This is why we know it first week. So.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
So strike sentence three is from section two point thirteen of the ordinance. Yes. Okay, let me get my timer back on.
For clarification, Laura?
Yes, sir.
You still want parking on the street is not permitted?
Everything else would stay the same.
Just have one sentence.
One sentence would be removed. That only that sentence would be removed.
Happy Martin, bear with me because I just found out about all this. So some of this may already be addressed. And I do have a question for the counsel. Um, do, similar to what they do in Hoover and other cities, do the short-term rental operators have to have business licenses? Pay a annual permit and have, pay lodging taxes and show evidence of insurance with at least one million of liability, personal injury coverage? And are those permit renewals subject to an annual review and they could be rescinded if there's?
All of that is addressed in the ordinance. All of that.
I didn't take my second one.
Yeah, come on.
I think there's some confusion.
Wait, come on, state your name and address, please.
Uh, Carol Hunter, one forty-six, Lake Davis and Light. So last week when we were here, we were told that that piece of property was V four. And then we understand now that it's special district. So asking for clarification from what I just thought we heard, we just want to make sure we're really clear here. That there would have to be a variance granted for that property to go into a boutique Airbnb. Is that correct? From what I just understood?
Is it zone special district or is it zon'd before?
It is zoned special district. Uh, plaque was recorded in October of two, and, and I'm sorry that we're just now giving misinformation.
I, is that how you're telling me?
Right, let's try and find out.
Right, right.
We were having to go back through records because the things that should have been audited were never. But yes, in October of two thousand and sixteen, um, that property was resurveyed with the purpose of rental property, um, for that plat. Um, as a city, we have to honor that specific plat recording. So anything that's other, other special districts would not fall under this.
So you're saying the proposal for the Airbnb boutique is not approved under what?
It, it was approved back in October of two thousand and sixteen.
Because we have to honor that because that's when that was-
But that's a Airbnb, that's for rental property, like for the condominiums. That's why we're trying to get clarification because what we heard and what now, I just want to make sure it's on the minutes that we understand because-
So it was listed in the, the September two thousand and sixteen minutes as rental property.
Right.
Um, by definition, and I know this is splitting hairs, but legally, what we've been advised is by definition, it's a different one currently. At that time or today, has a differentiation between short-term or long-term rentals. So with the honor in two thousand and sixteen stating that it was for rental purposes, we have to honor that no matter if it's short-term or long-term.
So that building is approved?
Correct.
Okay. How can that, anything else that we can do on, as homeowners on the other side to, because last week it was a different ballgame. So now we're, do we still go to the planning and zoning to?
So we also have to do that, um, landlord will still have to go through the planning and zoning for, for the approvals for, um, the different building, um, items that are associated with it.
Right.
Um, and, and yes, this is an opportunity, uh, for you all as residents to, to work in and, and with, that to make sure that everybody is happy with it.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll be happy to give you guys my cell number. We can work it out. We're good.
You were just getting up to let hurry and maybe a gentleman. Is there anyone else that would like to address the counsel's section?
Someone named Shelley Triple A. One twenty-eight Lake Davis and Light. What'd you say?
Would you mind repeating your name and?
Shelley, Triple A, one twenty-eight Lake Davis and Light. I don't have a problem with the Airbnb coming in at all. Great, it could be nice. The problem is the way it's been handled because we're all, we've all been in this neighborhood trying to discuss it, trying to, and trying to approach y'all. It's been some time, and this was back in two thousand and sixteen, it was already discussed and it's already been decided. And we're just now finding that out is a little bit of a lull. I'm just gonna say, it's, it makes me uncomfortable about anything else that could or could not happen. And then also, um, lodging tax and all that jazz. I mean, let's not ever make decisions alone for me, uh, based on money. That's just, no, no. I just feel that way about it, but, um, that, that's what the rub is for me, not, not the Airbnb particularly. I mean, I think it might be alright, but, um, something's gonna go there. It might be very nice. But just, just that as a community, we don't, we don't feel like we have a lease. And we feel like we were taken to be discussed and led to be open discussion and possibly when there really was a one. So that, that's, that's my problem.
I do want to say, you know, that I know when I speak to some of you individually, I told you I was trying to find out about that. So, I mean, you know, I apologize for what I didn't do, but I was, you know, that is something that I think several of us have been, have been trying to get to that. And like you said, we had to go back through records. And that was before I was on counsel and what Mr. Her, Mayor Cacken was, um, mayor or councilor, you know, so. I guess what I'm trying to say is we did not mean to mislead you. We were trying to find out the, the answers for you. So I, I, you know, I'm sorry that we did. I know, I can speak for myself. I can't speak for anybody else. I was not trying to, to, to not lead you in the right direction at all.
I understand. Still, things change. And it was two thousand and sixteen, it's, it's two thousand and twenty-one.
Yeah. And what the owner told us too, what he was gonna do, and now it's happening. You know, that's, yeah, just a lot of-
Is there any other question before we just pass to ratings?
I understood that we were only taking questions on the zoning ordinance.
No, we're discussing everything.
May I ask another question?
Which one, if you're interested?
Okay, this is about seven, three, four, zero, seven.
Okay.
Business license. Right. Couple of questions about two point one C, uh, about what it means. Minimum one fire extinguisher for every two living spaces. I live in a sixteen hundred square foot house. That would mean every three fire extinguishers. My house is fit in this room with plenty of room to spare. Are, is that, I mean, I don't know. I've never seen this for any long-term rentals. Um, is this standard or is this?
It's the standard, right?
Okay, alright.
It's safety reasons.
Cool, that's fine. I just want to make sure. Emergency egress lighting, does that mean an exit sign? I gotta put an exit sign in my house if I'm going here for a whole week.
No, this does not, this does not address anything that is owner occupied.
Okay, but if it's a long-term rental, I don't, do I put an exit sign?
But that's not overconsidering. It's not, if I'm at short-term.
Well, I know, but why would you do it differently if it's a home? People come to an Airbnb because they don't want a hotel. Um, and it would be really odd if I had a home to put exit signs in it.
It's lights, not a sign, and I, that might be the-
Does that mean a porch sign?
So like a floodlight, just light the, light the, the way, right? Yeah, not, we're not talking exit signs.
Okay, that would be helpful to know because I wasn't sure how that was gonna-
Because it doesn't say exit signs. It says just a mark with a T.
So, and if we need to add this to the definition, we can, to make it clear. You might have the same question. This just says, egress lighting is that which eliminates the travel path from an occupied space-
Great.
-of a structure out to a public way.
Got it. Okay. Um, F, on the same section, two point one, F. Um, when you talk about designation of agent in this, I'm assuming that means that if, if I were an absentee landlord and I had, had somebody managing the properties for me? This is so the city can get a hold of that person who's responsible or who's the contact person? Is that what we're talking about? Okay.
Was that it?
Well, that was my time.
You know, um, we're, we're having the first reading, so if you have additional questions, I encourage you to, you know, later, by the way.
Okay.
This, this first read is just, just added, first read.
Um, Chad, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Based on the description that he just provided you on the square footage of his house, what would be required? Does that seem like an unreasonable ask?
For the fire extinguisher?
Yeah.
I don't know what code it says.
Can you check that and then we can follow up if it's, if it's out of line with that and it's, it's, I feel like, you know, code allows it to, you know, based on a-
Yeah, I mean, that, I probably have to refer to rental property something, I would go up and go, come on, you're on that. And then the, the egress lighting, what we consider egress lighting will come under, egress lighting is a kind of light that has a battery in it. So when the power goes out, the automatic comes on.
Lights outside.
So, not inside.
Oh, inside.
Because, okay, you can get up in your house in the middle of the night and hit the light bar and walk around your house. Because you live there, you know it.
So that's not what this says. So this, like, egress lighting is something that eliminates a travel path from an occupied space, structure out to a public way.
So a travel path is the hallway from my house leading to the front door to go outside.
So how that doesn't have to be a sign, it doesn't have to be a sign?
So you consider a hallway a public way? That is covered in that versus? Essentially, you just need it. The power goes out. You're saying that you just want to be a-
Light so they can see where they're going.
Right, so in a folded building in a hotel, there's battery lights, when the power goes out, they come on and they light up.
Exactly.
The hallway, the stairwells, outside.
That just sounds cool.
So.
Is that required in our long-term rentals?
Well, one term would be complimentary of the house.
Correct.
Okay.
This is considered a business, then therefore we need to follow the business.
Right.
You know, what-
What does Ted say about the definition of emergency?
About what?
The definition of emergency egress lighting.
I'm not exactly sure, but I know, like, I think most of our stuff, it's going to be one of those where you have self-contained lights with batteries. When the power fails, that light comes on. And eliminates the- And eliminates the.
So backup lighting.
Yeah, backup, yes, yes.
Jordan, do you have something to clarify this?
I was just gonna ask, would plug-ins work? Like those dark plug-ins, well, obviously she said when the power's out, they won't work. So I respect.
Can we, can you check on, two things for us. Can you check on what Ted said about that? So that, we're just in line with the fire code regulations. And so for egress lighting and total number of fire extinguishers, extinguishers, whatever regulates that based on SaaS or whatever.
Yeah, and how we plan on enforcing it. Cause I know in my house, I have nightlights that are better than, basically, you know, kids are likely to leave the house, you know, we do follow the nightlights.
Right.
So I did not, you know, that would be considered, would be considered as a.
A battery operated.
No wooden stairs nor wooden decks.
I don't, I don't know what you said. I'm sorry.
No wooden stairs or wooden decks. No.
What do you mean, no wooden decks? As it relates to what?
Egress, yeah, code, egress.
Can't have no wooden steps or wooden decks. Like you have a patio.
So that can be your, your light, your way to get out, your emergency way to get out.
If it gets on fire.
Exactly. I did not understand that. I'm sorry. I was not following. So you're, you're just saying that egress lighting for outside of it doesn't count.
Yeah, can't have no wooden steps or wooden decks or, you know.
So it's got to be another way to get out. Gotcha. Not going on wooden stairs or the wooden deck. Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any gentleman in the back that would like to speak to this?
I have just some clarification.
Hold up so we can hear you.
Daniel.
Daniel, Stadium, four three thirty-nine, Oak Harbor Parkway. In clarification to that, they might fall to have battery backups that can be installed in any picture themselves. It really just be some kind of lighting with auxiliary power. Do you make some terminology for that? And then as far as the wooden deck and everything, is it no wood deck at all or can you fire code it? Because I mean, I've done it in different places.
Some places would accept it. We've had issues here because the stuff that has been used here, you have to redo it every six months.
They have a lifespan on them.
Yeah. So trying to keep up with it, it, I know before I took over, it was not approved.
And I was really just, where, clarification, is that specific to this or? So, so, so it works, correct or incorrect?
Correct.
Is that answered?
Thank you. I would entertain.
Okay, one more question.
Cog River Buck Creek Conservation.
Which, which is a business license. Okay. Existing zoning ordinance, correct?
Yes, ma'am. The existing zoning ordinance. And you're, I had to think about what I'm, uh, for the number. Okay, generally, the provision of river conservation overlay district shall apply to any lands located within the flood plains, or excuse me, floodways of Cog River Buck Creek tributaries and/or the stream setback buffer, whichever is greater. Okay. The purpose of the Cog River Buck Creek Conservation Overlay is to protect the water quality and environmental integrity of the Cog River Buck Creek, their tributaries, in addition to the Cog River south of Shelby County Road fifty-two and shall receive additional measure of protection due to its OAW classification. I don't know what OAW means. So the vacant property that we were discussing is part of Buck Creek. Yes or no?
Okay, I think you're talking about the property that's over the discussion about what's in Old Town.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's gonna be, the topic's gonna have to appear in zoning. I don't think our vote about that would affect it except.
Okay, so my question is, if it is part of Buck Creek, then section five, five dot four says, excuse me, the stream setback shall consist of tripped lands extending alongside both sides of Cog River Buck Creek and shall include all land within two hundred and fifty feet, two hundred and fifty feet of Cog River and a hundred and fifty feet of Buck Creek, measured horizontally from the edge of the, uh, stream bank of the active channel. So if the plating is already completed and it's within a hundred and fifty feet, which wins?
The, the plaque is reported in the.
The plaque. Oh, that's great.
Is that answered question?
Yes.
Same thing around, is that the property slated for implementation as a Cog River overlay?
Was it?
Yes.
Did you check? Anything, anything else, anything else? Council, everything else you'd like to say?
Yes. I wanted to kind of get y'all's thoughts on this. Why don't you pull it back a little? Okay. On the license section, where we were discussing emergency egress lighting, on that section, see right now it just says emergency egress lighting. I would like to propose that we change that to say emergency egress lighting with auxiliary power to better define what emergency egress lighting is. So just adding those three words. Would y'all like to discuss that or?
Is that meant to your own fire building?
Rich auxiliary.
I don't know exactly how to code it. We have to dig into code and see what it, that final answer. Cause like I said, most of the e, auxiliary egress lighting, when we're looking for, auxiliary egress lighting is a battery pack with lights on it. When the power goes off, it comes on.
Well, that would be auxiliary power.
So, yes. So, I mean, they, I don't know if code has any kind of definition spelled out. I mean, that's what we consider, obviously, the egress lighting or, or the egress lighting is, is self-contained. And battery powered.
But that, but we could put that in there with auxiliary power. We'd have a cover of that.
Yes, it would really. Stan helped define what emergency egress lighting.
All right, Thomas, no, we don't have.
I'm sorry.
Only you break down.
I'm, I'm running out though. I'm running out of questions. There's no reason to eat your slide in here.
Interesting.
Okay.
But we do have, so you can't get us over here.
So.
We'll find it.
Two properties that we have right now in Alina, which if you wanna ask questions later or whatever, if you wanna see them, you're welcome to. But we did what's called rental arbitrage. So we, my wife and I and our business that we built for our sons, we're trying to give them a business that they can work in. The goal is to be part of a kind of hospitality business. So we're operating, we're advertising, we're booking, we're taking care of the cleaning and all that stuff for these Airbnbs. What we don't want to have to do is repair the air conditioner when it breaks and replace the mailbox when, when a guest runs it over. So what we have done is we have fairly common, as business practice, businesses lease space all the time. They don't always own the building. Is that we lease the buildings or we are the long-term tenant. And since we're the tenants and it's our property, just like when you go over to Europe for four weeks, you could rent your own property. That's how we're renting it. So we operate it through what's called rental arbitrage. We have just as much accountability for what happens there. We just don't want to have to deal with replacing the roof. We call up our landlord and we say, air conditioner's broken, fix it stat. And he does. But I'm wondering if these two properties, these two properties would totally not be allowed the way the ordinance is arranged currently? Because they're residential, among other things. And we can bring it up to code. We can meet those requirements, but they're in residential areas. So I understand that these two could be grandfathered in for, I guess, I guess. But if they're not owner occupied and they're residential, then what's gonna, I mean, are we gonna be, even though, even though we're being grandfathered in, or I understand we're being grandfathered in, are we technically denied because it's, because, because we're just not gonna be owner occupied or it's not gonna be, I'm, I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering where that leaves me. I don't see a definition for this type of property. There's nothing like rental arbitrage.
So what you're saying is that yours is owner occupied for a certain portion of the year, but then, I'm sorry, reclarify that.
They are or?
No. So it's not my primary residence. I rent it and I operate it as an Airbnb. But there's no definition of anything like that in here.
It's, yeah, it's longer than our time, but it already exists. Correct.
Yes.
It already exists, yes.
Yes.
So if it is in existence based on how this is written, it can be grandfathered in. Now, what wouldn't happen is it wouldn't stay with the use. So if you moved out, that is a transfer to whoever rents that house after you. It goes away with you. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah.
You're right.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's an agreement with my landlord.
Right.
So if you, if you ever do not continue that relationship with your landlord, then that use as, as a short-term rental would be gone because it is a residential. Does that make?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
That makes sense. I just thought I'd ask.
Yeah, it's interesting.
That's a great.
I can think about that with.
It saves a lot of capital.
I've, I've never heard of it.
It saves so much capital because then we can build a business doing hospitality, which is plenty of constant work because they can call you twenty percent. But I have somebody else I call who takes care of the roofs. That's his job. I think, or the.
Right. So on the Alabama, this, on the, the Alabama code, this means that egress is under chapter ten. Public way is defined as a street alley or other parcel of land open to the outside area leading to a street that has been needed, dedicated or otherwise permanently appropriated to the public, for public use and which has their width and height, but not less than ten feet.
So that's just something that I saw.
Yeah, and that's what public way is defined as in the Alabama code.
But I think that we need to go with the International Fire Code.
Okay.
It's what we use. Yeah.
It adopts without amendments, this adopts without amendments, International Fire Code two thousand and nine. So it could be in, in that as well. And we did stipulate in the verbiage, I believe, that it must be a client's, with the fire code.
Yes.
Yes, this is it. Just know, we need to be clear about the explanation of if people have questions.
All right. I was wondering, I had the.
Yeah.
I began with the.
Just the three little words that make a big difference. Correct.
Last chance. I'll, I'll, I guess this is our first reading of the, of these ordinances. And like I said, they will be published on the website. The first reading that we have is for ordinance amending seven three four, section zero four, section twenty-two, to create a new business license type to cover short-term rentals. Second first reading that we have, first reading is the ordinance imposing a lodging tax on short-term rentals. And the next first reading, we have is ordinance amending the zoning ordinance to provide for short-term rental. For short-term rental. Now, this, and again, remember, this will be published on the website. I've handed the. The usual groundings and the general details. Now, I'll open it up for council comments. Hal?
I'd like to thank the, everybody for coming out. We really do appreciate the feedback. We like to all attending these meetings. I encourage y'all to attend all the meetings. We got a utility board meeting before this. And then we have, I believe, we have a planning and zoning meeting this week as well. So be sure to check the website next week. I apologize. Be sure to check the website and attend. You need to be active in your government. I'd also like to bring the council and the mayor for, you know, supporting the way marker signs to, as a way to direct traffic to our businesses and our, you know, different places in Alina for enjoyment. Thank you.
All right. I'd like to give a brief report on the three, the three groups that I work with as liaison. First is the library. I'm very excited because the featured author for August is Eric Carl. He's one of my very favorites. I think all of us can remember the very, very big caterpillar. So we need for that. Storytime is gonna be on Monday, the sixteenth at six, and there will be a tech home craft on Friday, the twentieth. National Book Lover's Day is today. So if you haven't already, go home and read some of their books. And Alina's library is going to be at Market Days on Saturday, the twenty-first, which is going to be a very auspicious day. You'll hear more about that in a minute. So make sure you go by the table and tell everybody hi. Also, on October, this is on October. August, the twenty-first, the hot board will be hosting another Old Town Live event. It will feature jazz and musicians. We've got some great artists coming in from the Mobile area, I believe, and another guy that's kind of regionally famous. So please come by and just hang out with us in Old Town and, and enjoy just being around your neighbors and your friends. Also, the diversity and inclusion board had their first regular meeting last night and elected their officers. I would like to share with you the officers who were elected. The chairperson is Domena Gardner. The vice chair is Grasses Washington. The secretary is Kennedy Donner. And the treasurer is Jarmont Andrew Field. We continue to look forward to seeing what the value that these guys add to our community. And that concludes, I'll wait. Good luck to students and teachers this week and to start school because I've got two students at home who are going to have a very difficult time getting up from the bus. So prayers for me and your students. Okay. I would love to just let you know that I completely understand the frustration as it relates to what happened in two thousand and sixteen. But I do want to let you know that one of the things that, it did matter what you guys were doing. So that wasn't the only thing that this addressed. This addresses a lot of things in the city and the feedback that was provided here at us guided this document, this current draft. So the feedback that you guys provided absolutely played a role in how this was evolving. I understand your frustration and I, like Ms. Allison, I'm, I'm sorry that that could not be helped. The amount of feedback that we got, I would, I would just like to say thank you. I don't know how many coffee dates, neighborhood meetings, emails, phone calls I've had over the last three or four weeks. But it is, it's, it's been appreciated. So just know that we do value the feedback. It, it, it absolutely matters. And I think that what you guys did was truly user voices to help do things. Nobody got a hundred percent what they want based on how it's written. And that stinks for both sides. Nobody got a hundred percent what they want based on how it's written, and that stinks for both sides. But your feedback did matter, and I just want you to know that, e, e, even if I, like, the document couldn't satisfy all of your requests, it, it did matter and we do appreciate it, and we always want you to continue to provide that for us. Um, all right. National Indiana was, it was past Tuesday, and I don't know if you got to go, but it was fantastic. This was the largest one that ever had an, a, a officer Murphy two and any other officer or complete that had anything to do with that. Um, it was fantastic, or I said that there was an estimated, uh, they estimated that over two thousand people came out and so that's three or four times larger than any crowd we've had before, so that's fantastic. Um, and then we had the first responder dinner this past Thursday, and that was wonderful. Um, and I do want to give a shout out to Parks and Rec because they were fantastic and really helped me do a lot of work to get that stuff prepared and set up. So I just want to give them a shout out for that, and, and I'm.
Sorry.
Um, and then lastly, just a reminder, another opportunity to provide public feedback as it relates to things that impact us is this Thursday's meeting on the twelfth from four to seven at the Hoover, um, what's that, what do they call you?
The, the.
Uh, yeah, the one on Valley Hill, this twenty twenty Valley Hill Road, remember the address, I'm the name of it. Um, there will be an opportunity for you to look at maps and see plans and provide comments. Um, so I encourage you to touch that, it's, um, one of the things that they utilize to, to move things forward in their process. So, um, if you don't have anything going on, please, please go, and then we really want to see this project completed. And this is part of the process, and we need people to show up instead of still a little more, I guess, so. So.
What, what time and place?
Um, so the address is twenty twenty Valley Hill Road, um, it is four P M. to seven P M. this Thursday.
I don't think you need it all the time, there's just.
No, you can come in. Yeah, you can come in, go, usually these formats are come in, look at maps, what we're asking questions that you want to ask. And then you just, I think they're providing written, opportunity for written comments, which they usually do, but, um, I don't know that there's a public, like, comment section, I think it's written, unless all those comments, so I don't think you'll be able to talk necessarily. Well, you can have it not in a, to a group that's making decisions.
But you can wagon.
Yes.
This is where you find out what's, what thoughts are being developed.
Just two sixty-one, this is specifically related to the wagon of two sixty-one.
Correct.
Yes. And that's all I got.
I have to tell you, when I was the first one in council, I got to sit at the very end and I got to be the first one to speak. Now, being the last one, I just want to say I reiterate so many of the things that they have said and I won't hold back over them. Uh, I do appreciate the council, we, we try to work hard for you and I hope that we are always successful to you. I know we, we try really hard to be and we will continue to be. Um, and this is, your government working, hopefully, in the best manner possible. I did want to say, you know, on Thursday, when school starts, things are going to change around Helena a little bit. Um, fortunately for me, I'll be out at seven o'clock, seven thirty, so, so anyway, watch for those kiddos. And, and, um, just appreciate our apartment heads and I appreciate all the, the residents of Helena that come and, and let us hear their voice because that's how we can make decisions. And so I thank you very much. With that said, I will, in a, in a motion to.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, I've had a motion to adjourn, all of us, thank you.
Thank you guys for, uh, streaming in, just let you know tomorrow morning, we have a Helena Business Association meeting at, um, Brown Sugar, my favorite meeting place. And, um, starts at eight thirty, finishes at nine thirty, so if you have a business in Helena, come join us, we're a lot of fun. I'll see y'all tomorrow, bye y'all. Oh, we need to find that egress lighting, let's do that. Where is that egress lighting? Oops. I'm sorry, it won't let me change, there we go. Where's that egress lighting? I'm on my. Let's find it. Ooh, I like that purse door and hoses. Oh. Okay, so we got the exit. Okay, good. Where do you think the egress lighting is?
Um, I guess, before it actually goes into a fitted.
So it will change.
Um. Okay, there we go, there we go. Work applies. Y'all have a good night, see you tomorrow.